Going back to the regular order of business, my court, 25-021.
Prohibited camp in a public property.
Motion approved. Motion made by Councilman Canoia?
Second.
Second by Councilman Duwas. Thomas?
Council President?
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So we've heard a lot of conversation around this legislation and I I am inclined to ask if we can either table this legislation. I think that these couple of legislations that we're putting that have to do with mainly the issue with homelessness. One of the greatest things that I think comes out of the conversation that's been happening here is that there's been such a great spirit of collaboration. There, when Sockit has put in place, you know, many different levels of of collaboration, including, you know, with the task force, what's happening with the different agencies. We have our subcommittee that has been meeting and I just think that in that what people have been looking and seeing at the conversations that you hear that when they're saying that when Sockit is is being looked at as a model, it's because of that spirit of collaboration. We haven't gotten to all the answers yet, but I do think that these things are things that we need to we need to discuss. I actually was even surprised that that there was no notice sent to the subcommittee so that we couldn't even discuss it at the level of the subcommittee. But these, you know, the work that we're doing and what we just finished having the first passage with the open doors, I think it's important for us to give it a chance and see what's happening. And I agree that maybe we should revisit this at a later date. I think it is counterproductive to what we're initially doing right now. So I think we need to see through the initiative that we have to be able to relocate some of the people, see where we're at, and maybe reevaluate something like this. But I don't think this is the right time. I think it would undermine some of the work that we're doing and I'm hoping that we can table this legislation for a later time.
To me, the comments.
Council President?
Councilwoman Sierra.
I just have a few questions that the ordinance didn't answer and I'm not sure if somebody can give me the answers tonight. I wanted to know first, when the city which takes the property or out of the encampments for the 14 days, where are we storing their goods, their property? I don't see that in the legislation.
Just it was supposed to, just like they store anything else at the police station when they have cars that are impounded, all kinds of stuff.
So this place at the police station? Okay, I answered the question because I had no idea where it was going to store. And then secondly, I would like to know who is going to be cleaning the encampments? It just says city officials essentially. Is it the police officers that will be taking the tents and the property out of the encampments? Or is it Director Dagostino's people that will be clearing them? Who do we have that will be cleaning out these encampments once the notice goes up?
Director?
So how did the tents get there?
I would suppose by the people who own them.
Well, I would suppose that they would remove them and if the mayor or council provides an area of storage, that's fine. But, you know, this is not in the job purview. We're not taking down tents.
Well, I totally understand that. That's why I'm asking what provisions have been made. Because I'm clear it's not Director Dagostino.
This is my time now. I'm gonna tell you as an employee here, okay? I've just about had enough. You got the legislation to provide some shelter for homeless people, fine. It's needed, all one good. Now it's time to move on.
With all due respect, I'm trying to get the answer to that.
I'm not done.
Director, no, but Director, I'll come back to you because Councilwoman Sierra does have the floor, so I will come back.
I do, and the point of my asking this was because I know specifically that Director Dagostino's department does not want to handle anything from the encampments. You actually completely took this the opposite way than it was intended. I know very well that your department does not want to remove anything from the encampments and this piece of legislation does not state who is going to be removing this. In cases where there's somebody that is in, that is out of the encampment for more than 72 hours and the notice goes up, who's cleaning that stuff and taking it to the police station? That's what I would like to know.
Well, I think it would be like any other ordinance that we have. It is, this body creates the ordinances, the resolutions, the legislation, and ultimately the enforcement or the handling of the way that this is going to be enforced would ultimately lie in the hands of the mayor and the administration. So if it, that would be a call on the mayor's part. Is it something that would be handled by Public Works? Is it something that would be handled by the police department? Would it be something that would be handled by a hazmat team? It's ultimately, like any other law, we do not give every point to how something's going to be addressed. It ultimately comes to the administration for the enforcement aspect of it. And I think it would always be handled in the safest manner for the employees, for the police, for if we needed a hazmat team. That's the problem with the way that these encampments have gotten. They've gotten dangerous and we may need to hire companies to do it. So can I finish my thought?
No, I said.
What was your thought?
That's the problem we have because there's no provisions in here as to who's going to be doing that and that is a huge issue for the administration. I somehow hope that there'll be some type of amendment or some mention as to the plan because it's not a full plan as is and I want a full plan. I actually want to support the ordinance, but not without knowing who is going to be responsible for cleaning and who's going to be responsible for storing. These are two big issues that this doesn't mention. So that's where my issue lies. I appreciate what you said, Council President, but it still doesn't, it doesn't scratch the itch for me unless somebody here can make, can pose an amendment that ensures me that it's not Director Dagostino's people that are going to end up removing the tents and anything in there that could potentially be dangerous. That's my concern. And with that, anyone can speak.
Director? So I apologize for.
Thank you.
Not.
I accept it, thank you.
Sometimes I have a temper. But I would suggest in doing so, you can have a collaboration with the police and because there'll be some personal items, I'm sure, and they'll say that they were missing or destroyed or whatever. So if you have some type of collaboration for storage, then you eliminate that aspect of the problem. And, you know, if someone, I could come up with an area where things could be stored in maybe like a cargo container or whatever, right? And you could tag it, bag it, so to speak, and do it in an orderly fashion. But it's something that could be done, right?
Yeah.
And with some type of system, if you will.
A plan.
A plan, right? Are you sure that the councilman had it for me?
Council President?
Mayor? So I know this is a weighty subject, but in section three, it says any camping materials or personal property left in an unauthorized campsite may be removed. The key word being may. So I think we'll have a discussion about, you know, the occupants that had the campsite or had the tent. If it was me making a decision, I would ask them to remove their properties, right? Because if we're gonna say eventually we have a shelter where people are gonna hopefully go, then we go into cleaning the camp. That language right there says we may do it as a city. But again, as the mayor, I'm not gonna burden my police department or my Public Works people dealing with stuff that could be hazardous to their health. So the may there means to me, and I could be wrong, I'll let Councilman Canoia maybe address it, means that first I would, as the director said initially, ask the people that supposedly living in that tent to take your stuff or come get it at an appropriate time. I think that's part of the answer, but listen, this is a moving target. None of us have all the answers today, but I think we're all going to a point where many people have said, and I've gotten many people call me and say Sockit is being proactive in doing something good to help the homeless situation. And I think all this lends itself to that, but we gotta make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Councilman Canoia?
So as the mayor indicated, section three, I think you were referring to Councilwoman Sierra. It says any camping materials and indoor personal property left at the unauthorized campsite may, shall may be removed and properly disposed of by the city collectively. We have a mayor, he's the chief executive officer of the city. He will decide who and how he gets dealt with, whether it's Public Works, a third party, et cetera. We say the city, its agents, indoor its employees shall not be held liable, et cetera, et cetera. So we may hire a hazmat team, as the council president indicated, we may hire a hazmat. He may hire a hazmat team. He may hire just a third party of people to clean up. He may, there's a whole host of, we're not gonna be that prescriptive. We're not gonna micromanage the mayor and how he manages this. The point is, like, we have a lot of ordinances on the books. It's camping in these sites will be prohibited. If there's campsites that are there and after they've given, been given proper notice if the stuff is left behind, we're gonna do just like we do with the parks, everywhere else in the city. It's gonna get cleaned up. We have a solid waste division that drives down the city, picking up mattresses people dump at the end of dead ends and so forth. So it's gonna be the same thing. As far as, you know, some of the comments we heard here tonight, including this, again, it may be removed, okay? It says the public safety officer indoor is designated shall attempt to provide readily apparent, to readily apparent owners at least 72 hours notice of the intent to remove and a reasonable opportunity to remove the personal property from the public property. We had a lot of people here speak tonight and I appreciate their passion and their concern. Many of them are from outside the city, I would note, and they talk about 72 hours. It says at least 72 hours. It's a minimum of 72 hours. If the mayor decides he wants to give him three weeks notice, it's, he has that authority to do it. The minimum is 72 hours, okay? So I hear this discussion about cabling and waiting and all this other stuff. We've done the open doors contract. We're providing 50 beds on top of the over 100 beds that we have right now. I keep hearing that other beds are gonna close, maybe, maybe not. That's a funding issue. And if all the good people that are no longer here tonight are so concerned, they can go write checks to keep the existing beds open, okay? My friend Pat Ford, who spoke, it's all about his name. He's from Cumberland. I called Cumberland today. I called the mayor's office in Cumberland. And here's what they have on their website. It's an honor to be the mayor of such a vibrant community. I have made my priorities clear to include all the elements that make Cumberland not just livable, but a truly great place to live, work, and play. We can create a great community that provides opportunities for all. If there's ever anything our office can do to serve you, please contact my community outreach coordinator. So I did. And I dialed up the community outreach coordinator and I said, hi, I need some help. I have a homeless person that I need some help with. Do you have a shelter or some temporary shelter that you could put me in touch with? And the answer was, oh, when we have that, we have a place where we refer you to Pawtucket, to open doors in Pawtucket, not Cumberland, Pawtucket. And then we have some places in Sockit. And that is the issue, that's the crux of it. I heard a gentleman sit, stand here tonight, and he said, imagine if all the other communities in the state did what Sockit is doing and was going to, quote, criminalize, and we'll get to that in a minute, criminalize the encampments. What would happen? Well, I'm gonna turn that around and say, imagine if the other 38 cities and towns, I should be saying the other 37 or 36 cities and towns excluding Sockit and Pawtucket, imagine if they stepped up and did what we do. And we add 50 beds on top of the 100-plus beds we currently have, okay? But instead the answer is, imagine if they did what Sockit does, okay? I grew up in Los Gliffield. They don't have any shelter beds there that I'm aware of, okay? I spoke to the state with the mayor on a Zoom call about open doors, which I support and everybody up here supports it, passed seven nothing. And what the secretary of housing said, she opened the call with, I wanna thank you for taking this call and having this discussion because nobody else in the state is willing to. But I'm gonna sit here and listen to these people, one after another, show up from outside the city and criticize us because we're trying to get control of a situation that's out of control so that we might have a chance to do what Cumberland is trying to do, which is to make Sockit a good place to live, work, and play. Okay? This isn't trying to criminalize homelessness. The ordinance, because these people don't like to read, says very clearly, it's subject to a non-criminal hearing, okay? It's a non-criminal hearing. Not criminal, non-criminal. And as far as this evil $250 fine they keep talking about, what it said is that they bothered to read it, okay? This is the first offense. It says any person found in violation of the provisions of this ordinance, ready? May be subject to a non-criminal hearing. May, doesn't mean they will be, but may. May be subject to a non-criminal hearing, municipal court via summons to appear and be issued a no trespass warrant documented by the police department for a first offense. For a first offense. If it continues, if a second offense or subsequent offense shall include, if they have a second or subsequent offense, it shall include a municipal court hearing. Now they do have to go to court. And this is important. When they find not exceeding $250 at the discretion of the municipal court judge along with continuance for acceptable, appropriate social services. So it's a fine not exceeding $100, uh, $250, which means the judge in their discretion could issue them a fine of one penny, okay? There's a ton of flexibility here. And it's not punishing people, it's having consequences for breaking a duly, if it's passed, a duly passed ordinance, just like we fine people for speeding. And we're all up in arms because we had a terrible tragic accident and we want cameras and we want to charge people all kinds of fines. But we have places where people can't even go anymore because of the filth and the swallow. And is that, is that, is that attacking the people? No. But the reality is, it's a problem. We had opening day for fishing. People used to go fishing on the river over by Privilege Street. They can't do that anymore. It is strewn with garbage and filth and needles. And we say, who's gonna clean it up? This guy right here has been the one leading the charge cleaning it up. And he literally had his life threatened two weeks ago. One of our, one of our guests offered to end his life because he was cleaning up swallow. We provided barrels with wheels. I hear this stuff, oh, the bags are too heavy. We gave you cops with wheels. We gave you a dumpster. It didn't happen. You know who cleaned it up? This guy right here. And we have in this city, as Mr. Corey Johnson indicated, we have audits that aren't done. We have CASPAC, a community center that we're in the middle of trying to get done. We have a budget we have to get working on. We have a waste water treatment facility that we're being sued for ironically by the state because we dumped effluent into the river and shame on us, fair enough. But the state doesn't do anything about the people dumping all kinds of junk in the river at these encampments. So we have all these major issues and we have spent, with all due respect to my colleague here who's had her committee on this, over two years working on this and they've made great progress, don't get me wrong. And tonight is more progress. We just added an additional 50 beds with the potential to grow, but we're gonna walk before we run in that regard. But we just added something. We get this snotty letter from the ACLU today telling us that we're criminalizing. We're not criminalizing anything. They say we're being hasty. We've been at this for two plus years or longer. There's nothing hasty about this. But they didn't mention anywhere in that letter, there was no recognition whatsoever. They called us, you know, anti-homeless. Yet we're the ones setting up a new facility here in the state, right here in Sockit, adding to what we already have. You know why? Because nobody else is willing to do it, but we're gonna get criticized. At some point, we have to draw a line in the sand and this notion that we're gonna stand in our police department like storm troopers. We've all heard people that have visited the encampments with Captain Picard and other police officers who have treated these people with absolute dignity and empathy for month upon month upon month. And we have an ordinance now before us that is simply saying, okay, we have beds. Are there enough beds? We can debate that all night long. There'll never be enough beds. Other people in Cumberland and elsewhere have to step up to the plate and do their part. It can't always be Sockit. So we have something before us where we can address, where anybody up here that's rational and sane will acknowledge is a ridiculous problem here in the city, okay? We have these encampments with all kinds of filth and needles. They, people can't use these public spaces anymore, on and out it goes. Now is that an attack? This thing doesn't say anything about homeless. It talks about encampments, trash, getting rid of the stuff. Not everybody in a homeless place is dirt poor. And I'm sure the mayor can talk to you about at least one or two people that have lots of money that they'd like to be encamped. It is what it is, it's across the board. I'm sympathetic, but at some point, we are a community of 40-some-thousand people and I appreciate all the good folks that come in from out of town that are full of ideas for us. Go to your own city hall, city hall, your town hall and pound the table, ask them to do something. We're doing plenty. And at some point, we've gotta force the issue. Now, again, if you're, if you read this without being emotional and irrational, you'll see that there's a ton of flexibility. Tonight is first passage, okay? If people wanna talk about it some more, we can do just like we did when we rescinded the omnibus tax stabilization plan. And they wanted to table that because of some misinformation, but we gave it first passage. We had a work session, everybody looked their heads around it and ultimately passed unanimous, we said seven nothing. So my recommendation is we give this first passage tonight. We can have a work session next week, early this week, whatever you want. We can talk about it some more. And if there has to be changes, fine, we'll put in changes for the next passage. And if there are no changes, this doesn't get second passage until May 5th. The mayor can sit on it for 10 days before he signs it if he chooses to sign it. So that puts us out into the middle of May. And then again, this simply says you give notice of not less than 72 days. If the mayor or anybody else is concerned that if we enforce this immediately, et cetera, there's not enough beds or our open doors are ready, which I think they will be ready. Nick, Mr. Horton has said it's gonna take him a week or 10 days to get set up. He was pushing us to get this done in three days. He was so anxious, so great, let's get it, let's get that passed and he can get his 50 beds set up. But if there's an issue, there's not enough beds or there's a concern, the mayor has all the flexibility in the world to manage this, to address that issue. But to do nothing, to delay, to continue to talk about this stuff. We now have something that's, if you will, the lack of a better term, a comprehensive approach to providing the beds, we're addressing the encampments, and then we have something else before us to deal with the litter on, quote, private properties. And we'll get to that later. But this puts it all in one package, if you will, once and for all that I've heard everybody up here say they wanna do something. They wanna do something about the encampments. We said we wanted to provide beds. We want to do something about the trash and provide notices. That's what this does. It has a ton of flexibility. And as far as, you know, the other folks that come in here and share with us their thoughts, God bless them. I appreciate their goodwill. I know they, their hearts are in the right place, but at some point, others are gonna have to step up. And as long as we're the chumps that keep raising our hand, and again, I'm gonna go back to Secretary God. Thank you for taking this call. Nobody else in the state will. That says a lot. So I think we owe it to the residents, the taxpayers, the people that pay their bills to actually do this because not everybody is in support of additional beds in the city because there's a very legitimate concern, if you build it, they will come. And I'm disappointed, although we still here, that Nick didn't reach out. I know we spent a lot of time in the last couple of days going to the encampments, recruiting people. He says you got 50 people. We now might not have enough beds. It would've been nice if he went and spoke to the neighbors as well, such as St. Anne's. But that's water under the bridge and he can start doing that, having that conversation tomorrow. I have absolute confidence. I wouldn't be supporting, I would not have supported open doors, the open doors lease if I didn't have the absolute confidence. I think all of us have visited the facility at Pawtucket. It's a very well-run operation. I have a ton of confidence that Mr. Horton and his team will do a good job and we're gonna find out. And if things go sideways, we'll shut it down. It's a 17-month lease. It's not, it's not lifetime, but I'm confident they'll do a good job. But at the same time, we owe it to the people that have been very, very tolerant. We've had people in this community that have given us a ton of grace and leeway to work through this issue. But they're at their breaking point, okay? You know, this, what do we do? Somebody decides they're gonna, we have opening day for Little League next week. If some people decide they'll set a tent up in the middle of the Little League baseball fields, we're supposed to just say, oh, oh, there's nothing you can do about it. These people have a right. No, they don't. Pace yourself over there.
It's not gonna happen.
So at some point, we have to take some measures that make people feel uncomfortable. We're not going in there like storm troopers. We have a, we have, I think, nobody can argue that our police department has been compassionate and empathetic to work with these people. This ordinance gives maximum flexibility. They may get a fine, not to exceed $250, it could be a penny, okay? And nobody, nobody here is trying to fine people and punish them that way. But we have to have some kind of consequence when you don't adhere to a duly passed ordinance. It's like any other ordinance we have. So with that, I will obviously yield. I will not support a cabling under any circumstances and I think we owe it to ourselves and the community for pass this. And if there's further discussion that needs to be had or someone feels the shit we should have, we can do that. That's why I take two passages. And we've got plenty of time to be now and then to have a discussion. I apologize to some of you. I put on in a hurry because I was waiting to find out if the open doors lease finalized. I did not want to broadside that and distract from that. That was the most important thing in my mind was to get the open doors lease agreed to. And then at that point, once I found out, I hurried up and put this in. And I apologize, I would love to spend more time talking about it, but I have had it. I told you guys this before from my perspective back in December. I'm tired of having conversations. We need to move to action. And we've been going slow, waited to get certain things done. We're there, we gotta move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President? Thank you so much. So I'm voting no on this. I would really like to see us table this and work on it a little bit more and make it through for a few reasons. So first of all, we talked about how we've seen members of our law enforcement, Captain Picard and others, go to the encampments, talk with people, bill before. They brought all of us to there. Those types of things will go out the window, I fear, if we institute these type, this kind of an ordinance because the second somebody sees a Sockit police officer coming up to their tent, they're not gonna know, are you here to come talk to me and help me or are you here to come arrest me? They're not, the trust is gonna be lost overnight. I also think that that might jeopardize our PD's ability to do their jobs. Ultimately, a lot of the things that they work on require the trust of people. require the trust of people, in particular, in these places and these environments, and that they don't have, they don't know anyone, and they don't have anyone who's willing to talk to them. I think it significantly hampers their ability to be able to do their job, like I said. So, I don't know if you had the opportunity at Councilon Kenoyer to reach out to Chief Oates or Captain Picard. If you have any of their feedback for this, or I think that that's also an opportunity within the subcommittee that we have, to be able to discuss this more. Also, I think it's just the most important thing for us to focus on is what we pass this shelter, getting it across the finish line, opened, implemented, fully ready. It's the number-one thing. It's a number-one priority that we have when it comes to this issue. And hey, listen, I hear everyone's frustration about how much time we've spent on this, but the war will always be with you. This issue is not going away anytime soon, especially considering the fact that nearly half, or maybe even at this point over half of our fellow Wausau neighbors live in poverty and are paycheck away from experiencing homelessness. This is not, there's no silver lining to be waived and to raise people's incomes and to lower the price of goods and the cost of living. So we're gonna be dealing with this problem for quite some time. And again, I worry that by moving to do this kind of an ordinance, we're going to be cutting ourselves, canceling ourselves, right, from being able to have the connection to our unhoused neighbors. Particularly people who are fleeing some seriously terrifying situations. Runaway teens, runaway children, survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault and trafficking. They won't wanna talk to us because they will be afraid that they will end up in a jail cell. And we're all good people on this rostrum. We are all good people on this rostrum. And we all want to see all of our neighbors be safe in house. However, not even five years ago, we had a mayor who instructed her PD to be stormtroopers, to slash tents. In the future, we could see those same types of leaders get elected again. And then, that broad, you know, that flexibility becomes inflexible, because what if we get somebody who says, "Well, I wanna make an example of every single person. There's not gonna be a single person breaking this camping law in my city." Every time you get somebody before your bench, Judge, who's my friend, because we went to PC together, whatever the Rhode Island connection is, "Hey Judge, I need you to make sure that you make an example. Give them two fifty every single time." We cannot guarantee, I think, and I fear that with the way that this ordinance is structured, we can't guarantee that there won't be violence and problems that all of us have either found personally referenceable, because we have many people who have spoken out against actions that the previous administration took. We don't want to see those types of actions committed when we plant, not only planted the seed, but watered the soil and cultivated and grew that fruit. So, all I'm asking is, can we bring it back? We have a subcommittee. We have a chair of that subcommittee who is incredibly dedicated and vigilant about ensuring that what comes before that subcommittee is vetted and discussed appropriately, openly, transparently, and effectively. And finally, I would agree that this has been hasty. I understand my colleague, he didn't want to blindside, but I have six years of experience working in anti-homelessness agencies, as an outreach and engagement specialist, as a policy analyst, as a senior policy analyst, and a lobbyist, all here in Rhode Island. And I'm here to help make these policy goals we put forward to actually be able to work. And if the goal is to have less homelessness, to have less signs of blight and neglect, I don't think that passing a ban on camping is ultimately going to work in getting us there. Especially with the way that this is drafted right now. And I'll also say, it was not lost on me that so many of the people who came up to speak opposing the ban, I mean, yeah, they got spicy, because they're passionate. They're advocates. They're not fancy, you know, leather briefcase carrying DC lobbyists who can come in and know exactly what to say to an elected official to make them not take it any other kind of way. Right? But it wasn't lost on me that nearly every single person who spoke either has deep roots in Wausau, has been working in Wausau for years, or has been volunteering for years with the folks who also came here to say, "We're people too, and we live here, and we care about this, and we want you to see us as who we are, and this scares us, because this would hurt us." And then finally, I just wanna say, totally here, then we need to see other communities step up. I mean, how much money does Middletown, Rhode Island have? And how much should they contribute back in? However, if all these other cities and towns are shirking their duty, why in God's name do we wanna follow their example? As a council member, I took an oath to make this city the best that it could be, to uphold this community, and to serve it as best as I can. And that meant taking on the big, big, big problems. It doesn't mean that we're going to solve it, but damn it, if that shouldn't be our goal every single time we step to this rostrum, because the people of this city deserve no less. So, how about we, please, see some reason, take it back in, so we can work on it as a team, because this is a great team. What we just passed tonight, this shelter with open doors, we just passed some transformative policy. That's what we can do when we work together. That's what I'm asking. Because even by your admission, Counselor, you didn't get to talk to all of us the way that you normally do. You're always reaching out to us. You're always calling me saying, "Hey, what do you think of this?" Or, "Hey, I think that you could, you know..." I've asked you for your advice and feedback and support on things, and you've worked with me and made the things that are working better. So all I'm saying is, can we do that with this before we take... Because I mean, this taste that we got tonight of all the people who came here, that's just the beginning. So, before we take that big, big, big step, even though it's just the first passage, before we take that big step, okay? Can we take just half a step back and have a discussion as a team? And really make sure that this is as airtight as possible? Because I think we haven't even looked, and I know, although there is no business about enforcing litter laws, but when it comes to trash, when it comes to public urination, defecation, etc., I will say, "My God, people, stop watching. Just stop watching." But we have litter laws. We have litter laws. We have public indecency laws. We have laws on the books to be able to enforce. And these laws, I mean, if you're caught urinating outside and an officer sees you, they can arrest you, and you have to register as a sex offender. I mean, these are some pretty steep penalties that we have now. So why don't we see what we have available to us? Because that might be, we might already have what we need. And then, you know, not to say that we have to totally throw this out, but we can make this better and ensure that we're not going to create something that is in our hands will be a message of we don't, we don't wanna, we don't want to have our people who are unhoused here. We think they're, because we heard from folks. That might have not been our intention to criminalize, but people have told us, they see this, and it makes them feel like criminals. That can't be nothing. That can't be nothing, right? So, let's take all of this, like I said, take it back in, work on it as a team. And I'm confident that we'll come back, whether it's next week or the week after, and pass something that is going to work, meaning it's gonna lessen homelessness, and is going to remove the, I mean, I run downtown every single day. I guarantee you, like, no shade, but I'm downtown way more than all of you are, right, because I live there. It's not, like, I'm not kicking needles every time I run down Main Street. So, let's live in reality. Let's work together as a team on this. And let's please table it for now. Thank you for your consideration and attention.
Any other comments for the first time?
Counselor President, Counselor N'Douba. Well, I've heard everybody tonight, and, you know, in the past, I always said, "Once we get a shelter, I am all in support of closing down the encampments." Now, we just gave first passage to the lease. And I'm looking at the lease, and with it in the packet is also the memorandum of understanding. If you look at it, it says referral protocols. Bullet point two, initial beds will be prioritized for Wausau-based referrals. In accordance with state protocols, referrals will prioritize people who are currently waiting shelters in Wausau that are closing, and also people living in encampments in Wausau. They are going to be prioritized. So that's why open doors is going out, and they're talking to the people in the encampments, saying, "We have a bed for you. We're going to have something for you." And I think that that's critical. And once we offer them a bed and they pass on it, it's their preference to live the way they're living currently. And we will not allow them to continue to violate the space that they occupy. And because of all this, I am not in favor of tableing this. I think that we should vote on it. If it were to get tabled, I think it would be a travesty. What I think we need to do is give first passage, and I am all for next week coming up with the work sessions so we can discuss it in depth before we give it second passage. Thank you.
Any other comments for the first time? Could I go? Any way, any councils for the first time? Director?
Yes, so, I'm not, I don't really, well, I do care what you, what you people do, but the police department got a couple digs tonight, and not by anybody's means, or, but it was just, there was a lot of talk about the police department. I will tell you in your conversation about the last homeless camp we told, I don't know how the word you wanna use, we actually went out to that group to see who were there on several occasions, gave notices. So, you know, when we use that word "stormtrooper," I kinda like, we're a very professional police department. Whatever you ask us to do, we're gonna do it with dignity. We're gonna do it professionally, and so if this is, if this is what the council wants to do, I can assure you our police department will come in accordingly, with discretion, and I just don't wanna give that label of the police department, say, "A stormtrooper," or how we're gonna handle these situations. I think we collaborated, we worked with all these groups now, and if we're gonna remove a camp, or a tent, or whatever you want us to remove, we're gonna do it with professionalism and dignity.
And I would expect nothing less. I've had nothing but that experience with the other department. So that's not, wasn't even a thought in my mind. Director?
So, I'm just gonna conclude with this. Councilman Kenoyer's presentation was spot on. He laid out all the points. This is first passage. As he said, the mayor is very passionate about this subject. He is, everybody here on the rostrum is. As he said, "A lot can be done between the first passage and the next passage. The mayor can, you know, choose to extend the time, whatever. There's so many things that can be done." I think you send, what I hear about, I don't hear anyone notice the taxpayers of the city. Okay? The business owners, the homeowners. I was born and brought up here. Okay? I have more time in this city than most. Okay? And I've done my share in the last eleven years to rebuild this place. And I'll be goddamn if it's gonna go downhill. Okay? It's not happening. Not on my watch. So, as the councilman said, he hit all the high notes. The same as the first passage and the open doors. I mean, that's gonna be passed again. So they legitimately can't get in there until the next council meeting anyway. So, there's plenty of time to discuss, but I think it sends the signal that everybody needs in the community from everyone. That this is a meaningful council, and you wanna address it on both fronts. Okay? With compassion, but also with some authority. And there's plenty of flexibility here. So, I really urge all the, everybody on that council to support this first passage. I really do. I think it's well crafted. It's well thought out. And I just think it sends the right tone to the city. Okay? Taxpayers and businesses. So, I urge your support. And don't upset me.
Any other comments?
Counselor President for the second time?
Counselor N'Douba.
So, I hear you on the timing. The way that I see this, it's a little bit different. I think that because we don't have things in place, we should be waiting on this for a little bit longer. You know, and when we look at this legislation, I know what the situation is now. I know who we have as a public works director, Director Gillette. There is no question that everything you do, you do with dignity. We're very proud to have you in our city. And the way that you handle things, that's for that reason, whenever we have any issue with public safety, I always call to get your feedback, because I think it's really important what you have to say. You're not here forever. And when we pass legislation, we have to see beyond the people that are here. We have to see beyond the council that is in place. And the flexibility is good for us now, because we know what we intend to do. But that flexibility might not be good in the future, because we don't know who else is going to be in place. And I keep hearing the whole thing about, you know, I understand the homeowners, the taxpayers, the businesses are all a part of this, but in all, like, some of the people that spoke today actually are homeowners here in Wausau, but also there are other people that are working in the community that do not be here today. I know through Limitless Living, I had a conversation with the person who runs the program. She works in the city. She's a homeowner here, and she wanted to make it known that as a homeowner taxpayer, that she is not in support of this legislation. So it's not just, you know, when we say the taxpayers, we have a lot of compassionate taxpayers here. You know, we have a lot of compassionate business owners here. They might have not come up here to speak about this, but they care about this issue. And all of us agree, we don't want these encampments. The goal would be that there is not a single encampment anywhere. You know, but we are working on creating a transitional, you know, process here between these encampments and and the shelters that we're adding. You mentioned that, you know what, if they don't go in the shelters, if they decide they're gonna go in the shelters, then you can identify who those people are. And when you identify who those people are, then I think that we can deal with that. But when we throw a blanket, they might think, "You're gonna get those who do wanna help, those who do wanna help along with the ones that don't wanna help." And you'll know the difference. We're about to go into a step that you're gonna weed out. You know, this shelter with open doors is gonna help us to get a better picture of what we're dealing with. And I, like, I understand that things are going slow, believe me. Been working on stuff for two years. I feel the, how slow things move. But we have actually accomplished a lot of things in the last two years. And a lot of it was setting some of the foundations that is allowing us to do the things a little bit more rapid that we're working on right now. For example, even this thing about being able to regionalize with the state, that would've never happened if we didn't spend out of those two years, you know, five to eight months working with the regionalization, with the regionalization legislation. you know, five to eight months working with the regionalization, with the regionalization legislation. So yes, it's going so. I think we've, we've reached the point where we actually have a stride because we're working in collaboration with so many different agencies with the administration. Again, I just, you know, I think that I, I appreciate language. Like it's noncriminal, it's a noncriminalized, you know, uh, uh, court appearance. But even though it's not criminalized and whenever you go through municipal court, our, the homeless, just as anybody else, has the right to ask for counsel for those things. So then you have tax dollars that are going into, you know, legal fees or whatever. If at some point, you know, somebody keeps ignoring, you know, I'm sure that there's somehow, some way, there is certainly some, some, some time spent, you know, in, in, in some kind of, there has to be some kind of consequence. You can't just say that there will never be any consequences. So it's money that is getting recycled. It should be spending towards housing people and it's going to, to other things. I, I, you know, for us, this whole flexibility works. I think that, you know, we need to sit and talk about these things as it is. I can't support it. You know, I think, because we can say, okay, let's give a first passage. But when you give a first passage, you're saying, I support this the way it is, right? So if we want to see any changes, I think it's as legislators, we should have those conversations, make the changes and then pass exactly whatever it is that we want to pass. But if you're saying yes today, you're saying you're good with this. I mean, there's no like narrative, you know, that's going to be like, oh yeah, but this, this council voted yes, but they really meant this. That's not in there. If you say yes, you're saying yes to the whole thing. And the other thing that I know, Councilwoman Denise talked about who's going to clean up. And I know we just threw out, well, maybe the police. The mayor said he really did, you know, didn't want, you know, either. Or we mentioned maybe even Hasma. I don't forget that, you know, our Director of, uh, Director Marco had looked into what it would cost to do like some of those cleanups. And that if we're talking about, okay, we threw out Hasma like that, but Hasma, we already found out, that's a lot of money. So who's going to pay for that? You know, so there's details that need to be ironed out. I think, you know, Councilman Canoyar, I applaud your passion. I applaud your commitment to this. And I know that you say like, under no circumstances. I think that, that you table, I think that sometimes when, when we get to like, you know, we're drawing a line, that flexibility that is in this language should be the flexibility that we have right now to speak with one another. And just, all we're asking is to just be included in the conversation. Let's sit down, let's, let's have that workshop. Let's talk about this and come up with something that we can continue the unification that we've been leading with in this city. And considering all that we've heard here today, I just, I, I would hope that, that we could continue to lead in that, in that consensus and that spirit of unification.
Any other comments?
Counsel, you go ahead.
Counselwoman Gonzalez? So I'm, I'm, I've come into the session, sitting on the fence in regards to whether I was going to vote to table it or vote for it. And then after I heard Mr. Canoyar share his thoughts on what direction that his intentions were, I really felt his passion because, you know, I've stated that we keep beating this dead horse. We keep beating this dead horse and we keep talking and we keep talking about what we've got to do and what we want to do. And we still haven't put anything in place. But then I do agree with our other council members where we need to make sure we have all our Ts crossed and not Is dotted. Need to make sure we have everything in place. We know exactly what's going to happen and not assume what's going to happen, who's going to do what. And so I'm still trying to feel my support as far as voting for it tonight, a tablement. And if I can be persuaded to make some action for tonight, we need to hear what anyone else has to say. Thank you.
Counsel President? Counselman Canoyar? Let me take out my horsewood. So just, just to respond to a couple comments real quick. Number one, to Councilwoman Fox, you know, what happened with the prior administration and how that was handled? This wasn't on the books, didn't matter. So whether we have an ordinance or not, how people behave and how they run a city and how they exercise their perceived authorities, this isn't going to make a difference. Whether this was on the, on the books or not, it happened. And this was on the books, so that's number one. Number two, we're not trying to do what other communities do, right? I said, you know, I indicated there's a lot of communities that are not stepping up to the plate. We all recognize that. And it was a suggestion, why do we want to join it? We're not joining them. We're doing so much more than everybody else. That was just an expression of frustration and disappointment that so many people come here from out of town and honestly don't think they spend nearly as much time going to their own city, town, city and town councils and pushing that. As far as table, I hear you. We should have discussions and all that, and I'm all for that. However, if there was no mechanism to have another discussion, if this was the only passage, I would agree with you and I would say, fine, let's table it. That is not the case. We have two more weeks before final passage. We have another 14 to 15 days to have three work sessions if we want to talk about this before it gets to second passage. There's an old saying, perfect is the enemy of good, okay? We're never going to have anything absolutely perfect. We want to get it as, as good as we can, but what this provides is a framework. I think it has all the flexibility we need and we can tweak it. But what we're going to do by ta, you know, tabling it just slows us down. As Councilwoman Harmon said, you know, we keep talking, 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 and I'm doing more talking just to irritate her. But at some point, we just have to put something on paper and move forward. And if it doesn't work out well, guess what? We can rescind it, we can amend it. There's a whole bunch of things we can do. But we have to stop at some point. And I think tonight is the start. If we pass this, we'll have the work sessions. If somebody thinks we need to tweak it, I personally don't think we do, but let's hash it out. But we have that time. Let's not waste yet another meeting and push further down the road. Let's make, let's move the ball incrementally down, down the field here. And yes, as I said, the, your subcommittee or whatever, is your committee and then the new subcommittee, your, your subcommittee has been working on this for two years. You've made progress. I get it. But we've got to, at some point, just stop talking about some of these things and just force the issues. And we're all adults. I think it can be managed well. I believe in that. So I will be moving with that.
Oh, I'm trying to give fair time to everyone else if anyone else wants to speak.
Yeah, Counsel President?
Councilwoman Fox?
You know what, I, give me a second. Not long, leaving everybody. You know what, forget it.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I just, I just want to say that tableing it still puts us in the timeline of when.
I need two passages, so.
No, I know. It, it puts us two weeks in, but it still puts us in the timeline for us to be able to test. Like as we implement the open doors, even if they started like within the 10 days or whatever it is, I really don't think that it's going to happen in 10 days. But, you know, it doesn't put us much further out. It's not like, like we're looking at months behind. If anything, it might put us like a week or two. But again, I, it's, it would require us having to say to this as it is, you know, that, that we're okay with it because there is no narrative with it. You know, we're not, we're not saying we're going to table it with the, when we vote on this, it's not we're going to table it with, you know, if we meet or we don't meet, you know? We're saying, we have to say as legislators individuals that we're okay with everything just the way exactly as it is, you know? And it really doesn't, it, it won't put us out maybe a week or two, you know? But it really doesn't put us out that far.
Any other comments?
I'll just do a motion to table it.
Motion to table by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilwoman Fox. The table, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoyar?
Uh, no.
Councilman Dubois?
No.
Councilwoman Fox?
Hi.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harmon?
No.
Councilwoman Tierra?
No.
President Jennings?
No.
Any other comments?
Yes, I want to make a comment, which was my earlier one. This is policy that does not end homelessness. This is policy that sounds good to saltated people that have homes. So, and if.
It's not intended to stop homelessness. It's intended to deal with the encampments and the filth and the trash and the pigeons.
And when those people are, and when those people are nowhere to be found. So that's what we want. That's, that's what dealing with this, it's about getting rid of people. So that's how we take it. Really? I mean, look at who's, who's clapping for this.
It's about putting them in a safe environment.
It's not a safe environment if we're allowing them to get caught up in the carceral system. You guys want to act like all this is going to mean is, oh, well, they get a little on the wrist and everything's going to be fun and they're going to turn their life around. That is not going to happen. Maybe we should listen to the people. We didn't listen to the passion of the woman who came here and the people who came here who said, a few months ago, I lived in a tent here. Please don't pass this. And the people that you want to make happy are the people who refer to our fellow human beings as feral and as trash. That's what we've just done. And y'all can roam as much as you want. I see some people now tacking on their feet like little kids, they're so happy. And though, how many people are going to be crying and terrified because of the message that we just sent out tonight? So, bien raro.
Any other comments?
Just to clarify, I, I am in agreement, in agreement that we certainly should and can meet before we do second passage. Our charter allows for that. Is there any way that we can agree to have a scheduled meeting to hash it out? Because I, I have a couple concerns that I would like to see.
I'll schedule it for next Monday.
And I think that we can all get to a place where we're comfortable and we're not delaying action. Because I certainly, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
Counsel President? For our mayor? So if you're going to schedule, we do have something I forgot that for next year we had talked about, burning mills.
Yes.
So they are coming next Monday. They'll be first, we can do the second.
Absolutely.
Okay. One quick comment that I'll make, and I appreciate everybody's comments. Here's where I'm at as the mayor of the city. I have a budget that's really way to be better. I have a wastewater plant that's really way to be better. We need to move this. And I give Councilwoman Lale Gonzalez a lot of credit for doing what she's done the last two years. And I've been on that subcommittee with her, on that task force, I should say. But I got very frustrated last year when I was on the council in '22, when we tabled things, five meetings in a row and nothing got done. I, I am not in that camp anymore. Like, it was so frustrating when you talk to somebody on the council, okay, this is on for the doctor, we're good, right? We're good. And then I got tabled, and I got tabled. And it was just like table was a game after a while. And I'm not saying this is in that regard, but I just have so many things that we have to tackle that I just want to make sure the open doors is here, it's going to be a great, I believe. They're going to do a great job of their 50 beds. We need to move on to bigger things. And I'm not saying this is an important, it is. But again, I get tired of just talking and talking about it. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I am going to end with this. I think that this does exactly what so many people want in that this does more to protect the people in the encampments than what we have on the books right now for the simple reason that the numbers, the 72 hours is a minimum. The $250 is a maximum. It sets thresholds, it sets floors, it sets ceilings. It gives guidance to the administration. It does not force the administration. It gives assistance. And we will discuss this next Monday, but I want to be clear. I'm supporting this because I agree with it in its form. I'm willing to discuss at a public here, I mean, at a work session, what we need if this changes that come up. But I am not voting on this saying that I think it needs a change. I'm voting on this because I believe in it. It's the right thing to do and it's the perfect companion to what we just did establishing 50-bed homeless shelter. This works perfectly with that. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoyar?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Dubois?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Oh, no.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilwoman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tierra?
Yes.
President Jennings?
Yes. And 25021 is passed, five to two first passage. In a work session that will be scheduled on Monday.